I'd like to call to order the common council meeting for November 22nd, 2022, at 6 o'clock. Tenants roll call.
Other person Wolf is absent. Other person Hamel.
Here.
Terrence?
Here.
Kapusta?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Other person Kabaki is absent. Other person Madden?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the public meeting law.
Thank you. Public comments: city residents and taxpayers only. Any issue that you'd like to talk to the common council or discuss that is on the agenda. This is not the public hearing portion that'll come following the communications in the mayor's office. If there's any other agenda items we'd like to talk about, come forward. Going once, twice. Moving on. Communications in the mayor's office. Just wishing everyone and their families a happy Thanksgiving. Take this time and enjoy the time away from work that those of you that get it and enjoy the holiday. Can't believe it's Thanksgiving already. What happened? Public hearing. Do you want to read it?
To consider the petition of Ryan Jansen concerning the following area described as tax key number 2170.994.002 located at South 63 West 16875 College Avenue to be granted a rezoning from RSE Suburban Estate District to PD Kirkland Crossing Planned Development District based on RS2 Suburban Residence District for the purpose of allowing a future single-family subdivision known as Kirkland Crossing East.
Thank you. Those of you that wish to be heard on this matter, please come forward, state your name, address. This is a one-way conversation for the public hearing, so you can ask questions that we can follow up later possibly, but we cannot have a discussion with you about it.
Sorry. I was on College Avenue.
Just state your name and address to start.
Kurt Levkey.
Okay.
West, or South 63, West 16669 College Avenue.
Do you have everything?
I'm kind of at the bottom of the hill there after the S-turn. It would be east of the S-turn. I've been having issues with just, not only the traffic, but the speed of the traffic. And I understand it's a County Highway, a Walker's Road, County Highway, but if you're going to add all 169 more homes and everybody has two cars, a husband and a wife, that's over 300 cars more a day, and to work and home from work, that's 600 more cars. If they go to the store, that's 1,200 more cars, and so on, and so on, and so on. And I always thought that that was a limited truck, you know, weight-wise. And there are semis going down there, and I mean, the average speed limit on that road is 50 to 55 miles an hour. And I'm just tired of it. I had a guy probably 100 times this summer drive by on a motorcycle. It took me two months to see what color that bike was. That's how fast he was going. The guy's nuts. Anyways, my main issue is, we need to put speed bumps in there if we're going to put this many more cars in. And I understand it's a County Highway, but you guys are developing this, and you need to be a part of this with the county or something to get something done, not only with the volume of the traffic, but the speed that they're doing. And I don't even know where all these, if there's going to be a lot of families in there, where the kids are going to go to school. We're already overloaded with the school district. I'm just kind of overwhelmed with all of this, you know? I moved here when there was one stop and go light, and I was on Reesian Avenue right down the road. That was it. And it just keeps, it's going to turn into a concrete jungle. I don't understand this. There's, there's no, there's no refuge left for any wildlife or anything like that. I just, it's, it's, I understand this is going through, but somebody needs to do something with the speed limit. I guarantee you, and a police department can use my driveway, whatever their quota is in a month, they will fill it in a day on that road. And I'll bet 99 to 1 that they'll do it. So that's my main concern is the traffic, and now you're going to add just, you're going to double it and triple it, and then you're throwing in Fleet Farm or Farm and Fleet, whatever that is. That's going to, everybody's going to be taking shortcuts, and are you guys planning on, like, widening the road? Or, I don't know, I mean, I guess I'm, I don't know how you're going to do that. But I personally, I understand even at 40 miles an hour, you throw speed bumps in there, that's a little fast. Well, then, I guess we have to reduce the speed with it. I got dogs and grandchildren and stuff, and there wouldn't even be calling an ambulance. You'd be picking up the pieces, and they'd be dead. And that's what really, really concerns me, is the volume. Now you're going to add that much more, so if that's the case, we have to do something with the speed. We have to. It's crazy. People are going to start dying, and I'm dead serious about that. That's the way I feel. And I'm assuming this is going to affect our taxes and stuff?
Can't answer you right now, sorry. It's a one-way conversation. We will be discussing this later in the council agenda, so then we can have a discussion.
It's the schools, the taxes, the speed limit and the volume of vehicles is, that's, something has to be done with that. That's the way I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, what street, I'm sorry, what street were you on?
College Avenue.
College Avenue. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Linda Lindstrom. My current address is West 166 South 6700 Oak Hill Drive. So I'm directly connected to the questionable additional rezoning here. I also grew up on College Avenue, right across the street, at 16910 West College Avenue, very close to him. Since 1962, I have seen so many accidents on that road with the S-curve in our front yard, crashes very much. My mother passed away in 2018, which is when we sold the house on College Avenue, and obviously I've been there a lot. It is a lot of traffic with what it is today, let alone having this go through. My concern in addition to the traffic is what's happening to Muskego. You mentioned the wildlife. Again, where I live right now, I've got a very wooded area behind me. I recently purchased a puppy, which I had to give away because I was charged by coyotes. And I think this is because, and going to Muskego Vet and the things that they've told me about the coyotes in the area and at Park Arthur, so much building is reducing where the wildlife can be and where it's very condensed, which is where I live, which is why they're being more pushed into that area. So I am concerned about the additional building, the additional traffic, the additional wildlife that it's pushing into areas, and nothing's being done to take care of the coyote population or the wildlife that's being affected with the deer, et cetera. So I don't approve of this going through. I don't want to see it happen. I built my house there in 2018 myself, and I didn't sign up for having more houses coming into the wooded area. The DNR was at my house to look at the wildlife, the trees, the everything that's in an urban forest, and I'm concerned that Muskego is just building too much up here that's being affected, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to be heard? Adam? I mean, Aaron, do you want to go over the petition at all? Typically, I do that first, but do you want to do it now? Would you rather have them only do it when we come, do the first reading, and then you can do it then? Would anyone else like to be heard? Going once, twice. I declare this public hearing closed. This will be discussed later at the council agenda item in a few minutes, where the council will be having its first reading of the ordinance. Moving on to consent agenda. Approval of the common council minutes from October 11th, 12th, 25th, and November 1st. Resolution 9922, 2022 proceedings by the common council of the city of Muskego to discontinue and vacate a road right-ofway in the city of Muskego, Wisconsin, Kurtz Lane. Resolution 1002022 approval of a, I'm sorry, reapproval of a certified survey map, Home Path Financial, and resolution 101 2022 approval of a Park Arthur tournament application with policies and procedures. I'm going to ask that resolution 992022 gets pulled for separate consideration. So could someone do that?
I will pull that.
Pull that item separately?
Yeah, sorry, yep.
Any other items?
Second.
Any other items need to be pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none. All the items except for 992022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Resolution number 992022, if I could get a motion to put that on the floor?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. In your packet, this, they're under consent, there is a memo from Adam regarding this item. This is a remnant cul-de-sac for a piece of property that is just off of Bass Bay. It was a piece of property that was brought forward for redevelopment a number of months ago, that, so it was going to be sold off as separate lots. In the meantime, somebody stepped in and interested in purchasing the whole, the whole property as a whole, and to be able to use it for private, private use as their own, like a single-family home. Part of this is, there is a right-ofway or cul-de-sac bulb that's part of this property that they are asking, and we would like to vacate. This went in front of Public Works and Service and Safety Committee a number of months ago to determine if some compensation needed to be done for that piece of property. It was, a number of thoughts were put on this. One of them was, yes, because if they were to, in the future, subdivide this property, we'd be giving them value because by having this extra land in there, this would probably, could possibly facilitate an extra lot or two. But it's unlikely that happens, but that was, you know, one of the considerations that the committee had made. So we had, I mean, if you can read through the memo that Adam has in your thing, but he had come through a way of coming up with a value for it, because how do you value an empty bulb of a road that's got concrete on it? So essentially, what he did is, took the selling price of the whole property, which is around $2 million, divided it by the acreage, and then figured out that if you divide it by the acreage, it's 180, roughly $189,000 per acre. Realizing that that value is mostly for the lake frontage portion of this. This piece of property does not have, that we're vacating, does not have frontage. It's unbuildable, really has value only to the adjacent property owners, and quite honestly, saves us money because the road would eventually have to be, relatively soon be resurfaced if we were to keep it as right-ofway. So what we did is, if you take that straight 189,000 and divide it by the half acre, it comes out to just under $100,000, $98,867.92. We figured if, because of the conditions we talked about, we discounted that number by 75%, came up with a value of around $25,000. I know his memo's got a different number in here, but I've had discussions with the property owner on it, and we went back and forth, and that's the number I think is fair. If council is agreeable to that, we will need to make a motion to that effect. Alderman Madden's got the verbiage for that, but any thoughts or discussion on that number?
I mean, my opinion would be that the number should just reflect the time the city had invested in whatever the project. I don't, right, what are we going to do with it? So I don't.
The concern would be in the future is if they do, now, their plan is not to subdivide it, but if they did, they could, you could look back and say the city gave him a fair amount of property that facilitated an extra.
I mean, it was originally technically a private owners at one point, wasn't it, before?
No. If this was under the last proposal that came through last fall to subdivide this, we were going to vacate this as part of that.
I'm saying if we roll back, like, before this was even put in as the right-of-way as part of the original plan, technically, I mean, I don't.
I have no idea. I don't know if the city purchased it, or I'm sure if the city purchased it, if it was right-of-way, it was taken through, it was probably purchased at some point.
Okay.
One way or form, shape or form. The buyer is agreeable with this number?
Okay.
Any comments, questions? Okay. So that's the major part of it. The other part that will be part of this, the amendment, is the purchaser would like to be able to put a gate up. There is a utility easement that runs through this property, which is something else I should have mentioned, that negates the property value a little bit more. He'd like to put a gate and a fence up on his property. Scott in engineering is fine with that. They just got to work out the details of the type of gate and everything, so that'll be partial, part of the motion as well. So if everyone's amendable to it, Alderman Madden has a motion for two amendments.
I do. I would like to amend the resolution. For one, state that the amount of $25,000 shall be paid to the city by the owners, Mark and Sherry Chapman, as compensation for the vacated right-ofway. And secondly, that the utility easement for the existing sanitary sewer main located under Kurtz Court roadway will be granted by the owners to the city, that the logistics of the, of the gating and fencing of the equipment will be submitted by the owners and agreed to by the parties before the final vacation document can be recorded. Second?
Any discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to amend say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion as amended, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Moving on to new business. Resolution 102 2022, consideration of an initial resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for Muskego Biotech Building LLC project. Information with, oh, the other part, that's part of the, the other part's not part of the motion, so. Got a motion to put it on the floor, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I believe there's a gentleman here.
Paul.
Paul, could you come forward and explain to the common council what this is?
Hi, I'm Paul Greshack, architect with Bryan Design Group, Bryan Building Corporation. And, you know, if you've been past the site, project's well underway, and what this industrial revenue bond is all about is the manufacturing activities that will be going on inside there. The building by its name, you saw biotech in there. The primary user, Ziogenics, is a maker of biotechnology equipment. So what they're really doing is, you know, it's more small-scale fabrication, assembly. I believe in the application, it talked about transfer of 30 jobs from their location in Milwaukee to here, plus another 28. From laying out the inside with the owner and looking at future seating arrangements, I think this building will probably have more like 75 people in it for that company eventually. But yeah, if there's any other questions?
I think the questions, I think the questions the council's going to have is, for one, what is this financing, and does it put, does it put the city at any kind of exposure or risk?
Unfortunately, I don't know a lot about how the IRB process works. I just know more about the, you know, what we're presenting as a project. This tenant is, the tenant that's going in the building is also part-owner of the building, so they're pretty well committed to this facility if that's part of the question here.
Yes and no. They should have sent an attorney.
What we have is the summary.
Yeah, we have a summary from their attorney, if you want to read it. We've done these in the past. My understanding is the city is not at any exposure for this. It's passed through, it's passed through financing and bonding that the state offers. They just have to, they have to run it through the existing, the seated municipality to get the bonding. So any of the payments and everything else, there's no exposure on that. However, I'd feel a lot better if they had their attorney here saying that.
Jeff, did you read it over?
Yeah, I read it over. I mean, we've done this in the past.
Yeah.
Exactly what the mayor is saying is, we're the conduit. We're kind of just the person that's, you know, issuing the bond. The issue is, if you read this, that they can get a lower interest rate as a result of this. But I, I talked to their bond counsel, and it was my understanding that whoever they were going to send tonight would know about this. And so I didn't know if we were just sending an architect, and so I'm kind of, I read this, does it make sense? Is the city responsible at any liability? No.
No.
None whatsoever. But as the mayor said, we don't have anybody here telling us that. We have a summary, and the summary is pretty spot-on. So I don't have a problem with you going ahead with this based upon the summary and what they're at, what they're telling us.
Yeah, and my input on that is, I've read all the documents as well, and I, I know what you're saying. It does indicate, at least from, from council that, our attorneys, that it was, you know, it is a no-risk thing, and it's a pretty standard-issue item, just not familiar with all the legalities.
So kind of, the key to the part about the not, not us being responsible is that on that summary, we're at the bottom, the 1, 2, 3, and 4, those pretty much answer the questions about who has responsibility, you know, do they count against our borrowing capacity? Will we be reimbursed for fees and costs? That's all kind of laid out there, and I believe that to be true. I think, I forget who we did this for.
We did this for the CGS.
CGS.
So CGS, if you're familiar with the building, at the end of Commerce Drive, right next to Eagle Park, CGS, we did similar, similar type of bonding through them before I was here, but that's.
And that was a project we also did with the same council, working with us.
This doesn't even mean that we have to issue these. It just means they need this done as a preliminary step to get this thing going. You'll still have a chance on the floor to vote on this and to basically say, no, it's just a matter of fact, this is kind of a, of a thing to get the whole process going.
So there's another step after this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it, looking at the, there is a schedule of actions, and in there, I believe it's, yeah, item, yeah, item 10, 11, 12, talks about public hearings and common council agendas.
They don't have any of that before them, but.
Oh, okay.
There is a schedule, and there is to be a public hearing there. This is, again, just like a conduit, this is just the initial thing to get this going for them. Then they're going to come and present to Adam and Scott basically what this is all going to be, what the building's going to be, what, so we're kind of just at the initial stages.
Yes. Yeah, this is, tonight's.
You know, I think about the building and about.
Correct.
What they're all doing.
But, but tonight is, looking at the checklist of items related to Muskego, this is item number six out of 13.
Right.
So there are seven more steps to go.
One being a public hearing. So there's a lot to go.
So you're not committing to anything?
Right.
You're just allowing them to move forward. Any other further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops, sorry, what?
Do a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Sorry.
Other persons Wolf and Kabaki are absent. Other person Hamel?
Yes.
Other person Terrence?
Yes.
Other person Kapusta?
Yes.
Other person Schrader?
Yes.
And other person Madden?
Yes.
Passes unanimously?
Passes unanimously, sorry.
Thank you. One thing going forward, I, we're happy and excited to see this business come, but timing of stuff like this was very quick and rushed, and we would like, if in the future. Okay. You guys are involved in this, like you were in the last one, a little more time, and then sending bond counsel would have been good, too.
We got this a couple weeks ago. I had to call their attorney just to kind of ask them, what is this even all about? So nobody had approached the city, nobody, so what the mayor's saying is really true. I mean, no one had a chance to really look at this.
Yeah, and looking.
We need this stuff.
Sure.
A lot sooner than what they presented to us this time.
Okay.
You're kind of lucky that council is approving.
Yeah, we appreciate, because, you know.
We appreciate the business coming, so don't get me wrong.
No, I understand.
It's a partnership, we get that.
That we try to get out in, in advance of these things as much as possible. I see that, you know, point well taken. It says November 11th is when this showed up on your doorstep, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and next time you'll get an attorney, not an architect.
We like architects, but more a planning commission.
They don't like attorneys.
All right. Review of committee reports. In front of you are the planning commission meeting, meeting minutes from October 4th. First reading of ordinance and second reading if rules are waived. Ordinance 1480, an ordinance to amend the zoning map and 2020 comprehensive plan of the city of Muskego RSE to PD Kirkland Crossing subdivision. I'm going to have Adam, I mean, Adam, sorry, Aaron. I'm going to, I'm going to have Aaron come up and just going to go over the overview of what's being petitioned here, and then you can, if you have any other further questions you need for the second reading, you can do that.
Okay, it was submitted, and there was a public hearing last month, I believe. No, this is the first reading.
This is the first reading.
This is the first reading. It's a 24, 24 acre piece of property that's just to the east of the Kirkland Crossing subdivision that's been approved as far as preliminary plat goes. This is 23.43 acres, 30 lots, so it'd be a density of 1.23 acres, or 1.23 acres units per acre, which falls in line with the rest of the development. Utilities and the road would be stubbed to the east and to the north as required by ordinance. The planned development district, all the same waivers would be granted as part of this, including the lot width being 90 feet and 100 feet instead of 110, which is typically required in the RS2 zoning district. Front setback adjusted to 30 feet instead of standard 40 feet. Side yards 12 and 1/2 feet instead of 15 and 20. And this would be a 25-foot rear offset as opposed to the 20-foot that's normally required in the RS2 district. All of the, all these, these waivers that are being asked for at this, for this rezoning are identical to the ones that were approved for the Kirkland Crossing, the whole subdivision. So there's no density bonus being requested, and this is just, like I said, this is a, in addition to the existing, or the approved subdivision, so it'd be a cohesive neighborhood. Otherwise, it fits right in.
Any questions? Any information needed for future, for the next reading? All right. Thank you. A couple questions had come up during the public hearing, traffic issues mainly, and the traffic issues that are on that road are the charge of Waukesha County, and they are doing, they will be doing a traffic study on that and determining where inlets and outlets can go on that road. As far as speed enforcement, I will pass along your concerns to the police chief, and they will pick up patrols in that area. We, we share the same concerns that you have. We don't want unsafe roads or unsafe areas, but we have to balance development with property owners' rights, so people do have the right to sell and develop their property, and that's what, what the council will be considering if this meets the character of the area and our future plans for that area. Every indication it does, but that's for the council to decide at the next meeting. But as far as the road concerns, Waukesha County knows that this is going in, and they also are aware of Fleet Farm. They are going to have to make some adjustments with signaling and other things on that road because, as you said, yes, traffic will be picking up on there, and they need to make it a safe road. That, that road, one issue you did bring up as far as trucking, that is a county road, and it does allow trucking, so, trucking, that is, all county roads allow trucking up and down it, so.
Should be.
Should be. Yeah, county roads allow heavy truck traffic, so I'm not sure what sign you're talking about, but now you have me curious, I'm going to drive by tomorrow and take a look, so. Any other information needed? Unfinished business. Ordinance 1478, ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Muskego BP1 to BP3 slash Gillies LLC, second reading. Need a motion to bring this on?
To approve.
Discussion.
Second.
Aaron will give a quick overview of what this is. Aaron will give a quick overview of what this is.
This one's the second hearing where there was a public hearing for. This is on the east side of Moreland Road along Commerce Center Parkway. It's a rezoning from BP 1 to B3, as the mayor said. This is just to allow for a car wash. Really nothing in it. Plan Commission approved the building site and operation plan contingent on this rezoning occurring. So the Plan Commission already looked at this and approved it. Just really nothing else.
Any discussion or questions in the council?
In your packet, there was some elevations in there, so you can see what the buildings are going to look like, if those were all looked at by the Plan Commission.
Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Ordinance 1479, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Muskego, BP 3 to B3 Nathra slash Renner Architects, second reading.
Moved to approve. Second.
Go ahead.
Very similar, except this is a rezoning for the west side of Moreland Road, along Commerce Center Parkway. Same thing, the Plan Commission looked at this, and there's elevation drawings and a site plan in your packet. It's for a car wash facility, and the rezoning, the building site and operation plan was approved based contingent on this rezoning occurring. Otherwise, it's the same as the last one.
Questions or comments?
I have a question on the dueling car washes. I realize it's not our place to pick who goes where. From your perspective, have you had discussions with both of these for them done?
Both, I've had discussions with this petitioner.
Okay.
So he is committed to put his in regardless of what Jilly's decides. I'm not sure where Jilly's plans are. I've heard they're both committed to moving forward. You know, they asked me early on, comment, comment was made earlier on from one of the petitioners of, well, you're not going to approve both of them, are you? And I explained that this is capitalism, and we don't decide winners and losers, so it's up to them to decide that.
Yeah, the only concern is, right, is it's not, it doesn't strike me as a very versatile building, right? If they're putting in like a, a long hallway with water guns that come out, like, I don't, if one of them does fall, where, I mean, it's hard, right? You don't necessarily want to pick winners and losers, but you'd hate to have somebody put up a building that lasts six months, and then it's not.
Picture, I mean, there's plenty of buildings that years ago were gas service stations that now are something completely different.
Yeah, these are weird.
This is the shell, yeah, the outside, like, they'd obviously have to take down the vacuum stations and everything else, but.
Because they're more like long garages, right? It's just a single run. It's a, I mean, it's really nice. We actually used one of these when we were traveling out east, and I saw one, I was like, oh, it's great, and then I saw two, and I'm thinking, oh, are we going to have a spot for two? Anyway, just kind of, it was a discussion that I would see if, what the thoughts were on that.
Who knows? Maybe, maybe if they both get their approval, they partner and do one. I have no idea. Again.
But yeah, I'm not one that's going to be like, no to one, because then you, that's a whole nother problem.
I can tell you is, the changes that have been happening with the full-service car wash in Hills Corners, which I've been using, I'm glad to see one in Muskego that actually might have service now. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers in the amount of $10,365.88.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Motion to approve general fund vouchers in the amount of $814,830.50. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Motion to approve wire transfers for debt services in the amount of $379,293.75. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Motion to approve wire transfers for payroll in the amount of $486,781.13. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. City officials reports, we have none. Communications miscellaneous business as authorized by law. Any updates from any of the liaisons to the separate groups? Any future adjournment item requests? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned at 6:35. Thank you, everyone. Have a happy Thanksgiving.